All right, 17:42 Central, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Billy from Lenexa City Hall to listen to the shit show. Nothing crazy going on in there, is there?
No, they're having a legal meeting behind closed doors.
Oh, an executive session, huh?
Yes.
They scurried away? Really? I thought it started at seven, didn't it?
Yes, but they had regular business and then they, I guess he said there was a special session to read the 500 emails they got, so.
Oh, Jesus, that'll be a while. I downloaded the packet, um, 380 megabytes? I have never seen that before and I looked at it, I'm an IT guy. And all the emails were images. They could have pasted it in as text, right? Which would let you search and read efficiently and search for all the terms that you care about, you can search for words. Now they put it in as images, no OCR. Made the packet 380 megabytes. Yes, like they used images, maybe not with a phone, but with a scanner. But like, it's an email, like you don't need to print it and then scan it, you know? You can copy and paste it. Either technological incompetence or, and here's my nut job paranoid theory. They don't want you to be able to search what all the comments are. They want that to be hard to, um, hard to read, so. Is there somebody with signs to pass out? I see a bunch of signs over there. Huh?
But there's a very large political activist group here that wears most of the speakers last year.
Do they have signs to hand out?
Oh, yeah, well, they did last year.
Okay, I guess I'll try to find them. Are these common in the Lenexa meetings?
Yeah.
Are the, huh, are they like a chalkboard or are those permanent?
No, they're, no, they're, they're, um, white, they're like a white.
I think more council meetings should have, maybe like a whiteboard to handle. When you're sitting in the audience, would that be disruptive? You can hold it up.
That's what these are for.
Very cool.
They're, they're, uh, they're actually a very smart idea, aren't they?
Yeah, I like it. I will have to.
Rather than clapping or saying boo or whatever, it's just, there we go.
Not allowed.
Not allowed in here?
No, no clapping, no booing.
I've heard of some council meetings where they allow the clapping, but they do not allow the booing. And that gets them in trouble for viewpoint discrimination.
Yeah, exactly.
At the planning meeting, there was, you know, nobody could make a sound.
Have you guys donated to the Restart people?
Yeah.
Yep, on their website?
Actually, I donated to Good Faith Network.
To Good Faith, connected with them, I guess? Cool, very cool. I, uh, I have shared the donation link for Restart because I think it'd be great for people to support it. Hey, how are you? I know some folks over here.
Here we go.
I'm just not so sure that tax money is appropriate to use for charity. Charity comes from the heart, right? It's a, it's a human helping a human.
Actually, this is like charity.
No? They're gonna get dental care, dental coverage. I don't have dental coverage.
Well.
I mean, pretty generous.
Can you say that again, like what you were talking about?
I think charity should come from the heart, from people consensually giving, choosing to help another person. I think that's beautiful.
So he thinks tax money should not be.
Because.
What do you think tax money should, like, go towards?
As few things as possible, but like to be specific, like courts, police, military, um, stuff that we would literally fall. Okay, look, 100 years ago, I would agree with you, 50, 20 years ago? 20 years ago, that would be an easy yes.
Why is it different now?
Because there's a lot of political and sexual agendas at schools. It didn't happen 20 years ago. I don't know why that changed. Yeah, it's, it's different these days.
Keep it super respectful, like it's totally fine to have a different opinion. I think it's just, it's about the fact that we have so many, we have a housing crisis that's completely undeniable. And, you know, human to human, um, we don't have anybody fixing these issues. And so it is up to us, like, I mean, fundamentally, it sounds like we have different views about what government is and what it isn't. And that's totally fine.
I just think consent's really, really critical. When you use somebody else's money, they need the consent for that.
Do you know what else the ta, like what it breaks down to tax wise?
I know, it's actually pretty small, the ask.
Do you know like percentages or?
Um, I know, well, I don't know the percentage, but I know it's about eight bucks per person per year, what they're asking from my city. So it's probably the same.
Actually, it's already approved and it's through the county, not Lenexa. And there's so many other initiatives that are funded at the local level. And I mean, we're not getting federal tax dollars, which is where the bulk of your federal, of your tax dollars goes.
Yeah.
And we're not getting federal funding for it.
I thought they got like $11 million of federal, like COVID money. Didn't COVID money go to buy it?
Um, a portion of grants, but it wasn't all of it.
And where does that money come from?
What?
Federal money. A lot of local politicians act like it just falls out of the sky. You know, but it comes from us.
It comes from all, all over the country.
Yeah.
So going back to.
Yeah, that's true.
What do you think, do you think the tax dollars should go just like to police effort, militant effort, like that kind of thing, or what? How do you think schools and, I guess, society issues should be funded?
Society issues? That's really general. Yeah, I mean, that's a real big category of things, but I mean.
Well, okay, specifically social service issues.
Social services, like, I'm not really an expert.
So I get paid through government funding, right? I think all of us do, and so.
You're welcome.
You're welcome for the service that I provide.
Yes.
I think that, like, my salary, my $38,000 a year salary, so my volunteerism is worthy of tax dollars, as you would put it. And so we're facing human services like housing at the bare minimum.
Like to, to make sure. Over to starting.
We're gonna agree, but we can agree to disagree.
Well, thank you, good, good discussion. Where do the signs come from? Is there like somebody out in the hall that has them or?
They were handing them out.
Where do we pick up the signs? Are these like, is there a group that's handing out signs? I've seen a lot of them. Laura? Do you got like a stack of them?
We have one extra, so there you go.
Thank you. Are there any that are, uh, that are blank?
I don't think so.
So people can write their own heartfelt messages?
I think, uh, McKenna, you can check with McKenna, she's been here.
I, I know that like form fills generally get ignored by politicians. I would imagine photocopied signs aren't. If it's all the people saying the same words, they're less likely to.
They're a little bit different on the back of these ones.
But when you hear something you don't like, you're supposed to hold up your.
The red? I think they ought to have like whiteboards, blank whiteboards. No, really, well, maybe a, a, a white and a red or something like that, that you can use for yes, no feedback. But then every person can have their own input without disrupting, right? That'd be pretty cool. Well, cool. Thank you. Yeah, just, no smacking anyone with it? You guys happen to have a Sharpie marker or a pen?
Rest assured, we are well versed in the opinions on both sides of this issue.
Thank you, sir.
Nevertheless, it is our tradition to allow public input on items to the city council meeting, which I intend to do, but it is not required by state law or city code. However, I will have a few different rules for the public comments in which we do review the question, published in the packet and on our website, which I will review in more detail. In Lenexa, we have a reputation of having thoughtful and respectful deliberations. I'd like to maintain that reputation and I ask that everyone conduct themselves in a respectful and civil manner. During staff's presentation, the applicant's presentation, and in the public comments, there is to be no audience participation. By that, I mean please refrain from commentary from your seats, booing, cheering, clapping, et cetera. These types of distractions are not helpful in conducting our business and serve only to delay what we already know will be a very lengthy meeting. This is applicable to everyone in attendance, regardless of your position on the matter before us. For tonight's proceedings, you will receive the city staff's presentation first and the applicant's presentation. After the applicant's presentation, we will allow public comment. After the public comment period is concluded and all questions are answered, the city council will deliberate and make its final decision on the application. The council will likely have questions for the applicant or staff during its celebration, but there will be no audience participation during that portion of the meeting. Before beginning, we need to declare any ex parte communications that the individual city council members have had prior to the meeting. Ex parte communications are those substantive discussions that you have had outside of the meeting that are not part of the record. You will vote through each council member to disclose ex parte communications, starting with Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my ex parte communications, I had a conversation with Diana Markley, Tom Schwartz, um, about everything that was included in the records, there was nothing more to add. Um, I met with Jeff Lysol at a meeting and, 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 and on the record, we just had a conversation. And Commissioner Arndt gave me a call to ask if I had any questions and, and.
My ex parte communication, early on, uh, I was at a commerce bank and met with Mayor Bain. He saw me out in the lobby, I went into his office and we chatted about my first few months on the city council and asked about me on that. And, uh, I asked him what he was doing post being mayor of the city of Lenexa. And he said he's working on this actual project being in a, in a advisory role on the selection committee board. And, uh, that's my communication with him. Uh, I met with Charlotte O'Hara at a event and we were talking about taxing cities and taxing incentives and her thoughts on taxing incentives. And she also brought up the concern for the, for the homeless service center. Uh, I also met with Jeff Lysol, uh, he wanted to meet him personally, we met at City Center. And a lot of the same sort of communication that's in the packet we discussed, or he brought up. Uh, I also spoke with Ashley Sherard, spoke with her considering potential loss of revenue, uh, in tax revenue from the, uh, cap disney in that area. Uh, spoke with the resident, Laura Owens, who called me to deplore her concerns with the project. I also spoke with Annabeth Serval, a neighbor of mine, can tell her untimely death. Annabeth and, Annabeth had called to deplore her concerns with the project and the rushed aspect of the whole process. She also talked about how her original lead in the county way back when when she was the county commissioner. So that's my ex parte communication.
Yeah, in addition to all the emails that all of us got, uh, I, that we sent onto the packet. Uh, I met with Jeff Lysol, uh, Ashley Sherard of the United Chamber, uh, Pauling, Billy LaCluse. Uh, I went on tours of Restart and went on tours of Safe Home. I spoke with, uh, Commissioner Charlotte O'Hara and also with Commissioner Jeff Myers.
Um, I reached out to Stephanie Boyer, CEO of Restart, Julie Hamfley from the Board of Commissioners, Jason Bensickel, former CEO of Hope Faith KC, Barbara McTever from Project 1020, Brandon McGuire, Assistant City Manager from Lawrence. Um, I am going to follow me to pronounce this name, Jill DeBride Jomicore, um, Assistant County Administrator for Douglas County, um, the Good Faith Network, Josh Kenji, uh, Houseless Prevention Coordinator for KTMO, and Heidi Wooten, CEO of Safe Home. I reached out to all of these individuals and organizations in order to ask clarifying questions about the application, case process, comments and questions from the public, or to provide more information about the issue of homelessness in our region.
Good evening. My ex parte communications include a discussion with Jason Bensickel, who was the former executive director of Hope Faith. Um, I wanted to get a better understanding of homelessness in the metro area. Uh, in the process of his facility when he ran Hope Faith. And, uh, I met with him along with Councilmember Arroyo. At the request of Jeff and Kathy, Kathy Lysol, I met with them in my office. Um, we also did a tour of the Restart facility downtown and a tour of Safe Home. And I did have communication and met with Ashley Sherard, Chamber of Commerce. I had questions about, uh, the revenue generated, uh, within that area and the potential loss of revenue from meeting with businesses. And that is the extent of my ex parte communication, but anything else has been included in the packet.
Good evening. Uh, I met with Jeff Lysol in August. Also Ashley Sherard, Mike Bain. And on, uh, September 3rd, I was invited to visit with a group of residents of Lakeview Village where I live, who included Dick Weaver, Janet Ed French, Jack Gregory, and Kenneth and Jeanette Grins. Also, as, as I wandered around Lakeview, I would occasionally, uh, we asked my, another resident or two, uh, just to, uh, about the facility and we'd have a conversation.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my ex parte communications include, uh, Mike Bain, former mayor, Annabeth Serval, Jeff Lysol, Vivian Givens, Givens, excuse me, Travis Newley, Krista Mann, Ashley Sherard from, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, Sir Mire, County Commissioner, best county commissioner, Ellen Hanson, former police chief, and, uh, various neighbors that I see out and about or in town.
Uh, in addition to the, um, similar ex parte communications that the rest of us have, um, taken, we also, I think, did mention that we all received a tour of the existing La Quinta facility. Uh, we were split into two groups, so as not to create a quorum. That afternoon, um, I've had, uh, several conversations with Chairman Mike Kelly to make clarifying questions after the staff's recommendation. And he and I, um, met with the Assistant, or County Manager, um, Penny Bosso Ferguson and Becky Yocum. Also just provided clarifying questions after the staff's recommendation. The applicant and staff have been advised to keep their presentations to approximately 30 minutes this evening. And with that, I will call up the first staff presentation, Becky.
Good evening, Mayor Sanders and members of the city council, I'm City Manager Becky Yocum. And as you know, we are here tonight on Restart's request for approval of a special use permit to operate a homeless shelter in the current La Quinta Hotel and former Denny's Restaurant located at 9461 and 9471 Lenexa Drive. You can see the project location here, located near the intersection of 95th Street and I-35. In many ways, this is not unlike any other special use permit that you all hear several times a year. Uh, but in a few ways, this application is unique. Um, and I'm gonna spend a few minutes addressing some of the unique elements of the application before I turn it over to Community Development Director Scott McCullough and Police Chief Don Layman to provide a more thorough staff analysis of the application. Perhaps the most obvious way that this differs from many of the applications that, um, you all regularly, um, decide is in the sheer amount of public input that you proceed. Um, as you no doubt recognize from the hundreds of pages of correspondence, this is a difficult and emotional issue with many perspectives and opinions on both sides. There were even those who, um, in addition to the, just many letters of support and in opposition, there were even those who did their own analysis of the golden criteria for you. And I want to acknowledge all of that because, um, although we are going to address a few clarifying, uh, matters tonight relative to some of the differing opinions that you've heard, we definitely won't be attempting to address or rebut every different opinion that you heard on a point by point basis. Um, that's not a wise use of our time and ultimately it doesn't matter because as you know, reasonable minds can and do differ on this application and on the golden criteria. And staff isn't here tonight to convince you that we're right and that everyone else is wrong. We're here, as we are every time we have a matter like this before you, to give you our best professional opinion. And to, to give you that opinion on this application and on the specific criteria that apply to it. So tonight, that's what we're going to focus on. I'm also going to touch on the process which applies to this application. Now, I'll admit that most of this process really isn't unique, but the applicant has made several allegations that staff's treatment of them throughout this process was unfair or unequal. And because of that, I think it's really important that I spend a few minutes, um, you know, providing clarification on that point. First, as you know, the evaluation of a special use permit is a quasi judicial function of the government body. An action is quasi judicial when you are sitting as a judge of sorts on a matter where your decision affects a specific piece of property as it does here. And as you also know, in quasi judicial proceedings, certain due process rights attach. So inherent in that is the need to remain fair and unbiased and open minded throughout the process and to avoid prejudging the application. Now, this is something that applies to you as decision makers, of course, but it's also important to note, this is a standard that staff holds itself to as well. So from a staff perspective, applications go through a pre-application process and then a formal application process. And our obligation to remain neutral and open minded applies equally to both of those processes. So while the applicant has said and written several times, and I'm sure they'll say it again tonight, that staff met with them numerous times and then very late in the process did an about face as to our position on their application, nothing could be further from the truth. And I believe this really just reflects a fundamental misunderstanding of the Land use process on the part of the applicant. During the pre-application process, our team did meet with Restart and Johnson County Government's team many times. And as they readyed their application for formal submittal, we do that with most if not all applications. And throughout that process, we gave feedback, we made suggestions, we asked questions. And those are aimed at learning more about what their proposal will include, more about the application and at helping to bring it more closely into compliance with city code. But one thing we did not ever do during the pre-application process was to indicate staff support of this application. Importantly, the pre-application process is very different in completing, completing an analysis of the special use permit criteria or the golden criteria, as we refer to them, which we don't do and frankly can't do until the application is final and formally submitted. There are a lot of reasons for that, but not the least of those is that an application is always a work in progress and constantly changing all the way up to, and sometimes after, it is formally submitted. So there's really no point in working on a golden analysis before you get to the point of having a final application. Now, the formal submittal of this application occurred on Monday, July 22nd. And 16 days later, on Thursday, August 8th, we notified the applicant's team that our recommendation would be for denial. That's a very standard timeframe process, although I'll say, if it differs from the standard process in any way, it's that maybe we gave them that notice a little earlier than we do some other applications. Because we were trying our very best to let them know where we were going to be on this as soon as we knew it. So it's unfortunate that neither the applicant nor their team understood the point at which we would reach a staff recommendation, but it certainly doesn't amount to unfair or unequal treatment on the part of city staff. Turning next to the formal process that's set forth in the code and which applies to every special use permit, I think to begin, it's important to note what I think you know, but you are not being asked to determine the need for a homeless shelter. Rather, you are being asked to determine whether the use is appropriate at the proposed location. Further, as you know, on every special use permit, the very purpose of that mechanism is to analyze uses which might not be okay in a particular zoning district due to their nature or intensity or impact and determine whether they're appropriate at a specific location. Now, in this instance, the SUP process goes a little further, a little more in depth on a variety of topics that sometimes we don't consider with special use permit applications. This includes things like operations, funding, staffing, transportation, communication, support services. Those are all required elements of the binding management plan that is required by the supplementary use regulations applicable only to homeless shelters. And these additional provisions were included in our code precisely because of the unique nature of the homeless shelter use. So it has a special use permit, there are many of those in our code, and it also has a set of supplementary use regulations, which are shown on the screen that apply to it. Now, the applicant has taken issue with one of these requirements, that of budgetary information. They indicated that that information is not required for the special use permit and that our requesting such information was inappropriate. First, I would tell you that I believe the plain language of the code, which I've highlighted there in bold, requires a narrative description of the nature and characteristics of the use. That was intentionally written broadly to allow review and approval of any criteria which is relevant to the overall operation of the shelter use, which in my view certainly includes funding. To function effectively and provide the services that the operator proposes to provide, adequate funding is critically important. And it helps to assure that the shelter use is even viable. Moreover, since the facility is being funded and remodeled with public tax dollars and the applicant in Johnson County has sought additional funding from 20 plus Johnson County cities to cover and identify an operating budget deficit, this information is even more critical. But as of many other aspects of our analysis, staff has simply provided you this information in context and that's from the applicant's budget and from the funding information. budget and from the funding information that they've shared with us. And it will be you, the governing body, who determines what weight to give to that information. Now, before I turn it over to Scott, I want to touch briefly on two of the items noted in the report, which led in part to staff's recommendation of denial. The first is location. This is located in a key commercial corridor of the city. It was identified for investment and redevelopment through the establishment of a tax increment financing district in two thousand and seven, over seventeen years ago. The findings that led to establishment of the Tiff District included a significant number of aging and deteriorating structures and pavement, access problems, high traffic volumes, and the presence of traffic hazards, just to name a few. The staff report details the positive impacts that this designation has had in the area, in terms of both significant private and public investment. But I would submit, you can see for yourself, when you drive or walk through the area, the progress that has been made on many of the very issues that were the reason for establishing the Tiff District in the first place. And unfortunately, this use runs directly counter to those goals, and could undermine some of that incredible investment and momentum that we've seen in that area. The proposed use also doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. It's located six hundred feet from residents living in multifamily communities, nine hundred feet from residents living in single-family communities, near numerous businesses, including some of the highest sales tax generating businesses in our entire community, less than three-quarters of a mile from Project Ten Twenty, which is the county's only other homeless shelter for single adults, and less than a mile from the school. The applicant disputes staff definition of the neighborhood, arguing that since only property owners within two hundred feet of the proposed shelter received failed notice, a broader area shouldn't be considered. We disagree with that. The two-hundred-foot notice is a legal requirement, not a definition of the neighborhood for evaluating a special use permit. In addition, there were legal notices also posted on the property and published in a countywide newspaper, which both give a clear indication that those notices are intended for a much broader audience than just folks within two hundred feet of the property. Ultimately, staff's use of a one-mile radius reflects our professional judgment on what constitutes a reasonable neighborhood area. But it's up to you to decide the applicable neighborhood, and whether that's two hundred feet, or a mile, or something completely different. Ultimately, however, it's just our conclusion that this is not an appropriate location for the proposed use. The second issue I want to touch on briefly is law enforcement resources.
Becky, can I have you pause for a second? Folks, the signs are very distracting, and we need to be able to concentrate on what's being shared. I'm gonna ask you, please, for the first time, to keep them down.
Based on our experience and research, we know the proposed use will increase demands on law enforcement, requiring additional staffing. As I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, this is not an indictment of the un-housed-
The public is distracted.
-or an accusation of criminal behavior. We understand that being homeless is not a crime. However, whenever someone dials nine-one-one in the city of Lenexa, our police department responds every time. And each call, whether that's for a crime in progress or a welfare check, takes time, costs money, and limits those officers' availability for other calls in the community. To prevent this from impacting the level of police protection we provide to the entire community, Chief Lehman and I have determined that additional staffing will be necessary if this special use is approved. Now, given the scrutiny that has been levied against this conclusion, I've actually asked Chief Lehman to provide further explanation and context around that later. She's much better able to do that than I am. But my point in mentioning this is, relates to the financial implications of this decision. From a financial standpoint, it is possible for the city to add this additional staffing. And if the special use permit is approved, we will. We simply believe that the significant cost of adding this additional staffing, which starts at nearly five hundred thousand dollars in the first year and will increase in each year thereafter, is an unreasonable burden on the city of Lenexa to address what is a countywide concern, especially when compared to the combined total annual financial contributions of the other Johnson County cities and the Johnson County Government towards the shelter's operations. Finally, while both the applicant in Johnson County and letters received late last week acknowledged some of the impacts of the proposed use and offered potential solutions, which we appreciate, these came too late in the process for us to fully evaluate them. If you have questions about those, we can certainly give you our thoughts later in this conversation. But for me, more importantly, these solutions do not address the core-